Ask for our student Nick to lead us in the pledge, please.
May have everyone stand for the pledge. There's a flag in the back right corner of the room just there. Perfect. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and injustice for all. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. We do not have a report out of closed session this evening. And now I'd like to ask for a motion for our agenda. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
We just pulled item three E, which was closed session.
Thank you. Thank you. No motion, please, for agenda, adopting our agenda. Hey, student vote? All in favor, I oppose. Carrie's five oh. Thank you. We are first item, public comment on non-agenda items. We have several cards submitted.
Yes. Um, so I'll call the first speaker and then I'll let you know who will come up after the next speaker. Mr. Blotnik, can you come to the podium? And following Mr. Blotnik will be Mr. Brown, Steve Brown.
And just a reminder, you have three minutes and your time is on the wall, on the screen. Thank you.
And at three minutes, if you could just stop where you are, that way we can hear everybody's comments and go on with the agenda. Thank you very much.
And per the Brown Act, we cannot respond to any questions that are non-agenda items.
Because we cannot get into discussion on a non-agenda item. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. I'm Ryan Blonnik. I submitted written comments and spoke at your meeting on March 23rd about the facility master plan. Neither of these comments have been addressed. We are still hopeful the district will address our concerns, though, so we're doing everything we can to get the district's attention. This is my husband and daughter. We want you to hear us because our home is immediately adjacent to the high school on two sides. We are not against the project. We do want you to reasonably modify your plans. And this is the parking garage on two sides. Your architect made that, not me. All the plants around our house are in our house. It's literally concrete right up to our yard. On one side of our home, the current plan is to build the parking garage less than three feet from our property line. Three feet. Imagine a line along the floor from one wall to the other. On the side where I stand is our backyard where our daughter plays. Three feet away on the other side, right there. Behind a wall is a sea of parked cars, safety and privacy issues, car lights glaring at night, gas fumes. We just want our home and our yard to be considered in the plans and so far it has not been considered. It's not fair. We sent a thoughtful and constructive letter on Tuesday. So far, we received two very nice emails from a couple of board members. Thank you. We hope the rest of you will read our email and letter. It details four concrete solutions and reasonable ways to consider our yard and home. If you address our concerns, this is what it would look like. We would have a setback on the rear of our home. We would have a setback on the side of our home. We would have landscape in that setback to separate uses between residential and non-residential uses. This is totally a normal thing, which you guys did not propose. I also want to talk about the alternate plans with the larger pools in the same location. We support a larger pool in the same general area, but we will not accept the layouts as planned because they are even less considerate of our house than the original plan. The plan show a sea of bleachers in lieu of cars zero feet from our property line. This is zero feet. This is me where my child plays. These are the bleachers. The bleachers go six feet in the air. People stand on top of them. Imagine them clanging, clang, 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 screaming, woo, go team! Right in my backyard. They turn around. They look, oh, look at that cute little toddler laying on the ground. There are multiple other considerate potential layouts with a larger pool in the same general location without bleachers impacting the homes. I implore you to reach out to us. We do not mind that this changes in our backyard. We do want our yard to be considered. It is important that you consider and protect our unique family, too.
That's three minutes.
Thank you. Ryan, could I have the pronoun of your last name? Blonnik. Thank you, Mr. Blonnik. Mr. Brown, come on up. And following Mr. Brown, Mr. McIntosh.
Hello. Good to see you all. Thank you. Just had a couple of comments. First one is just to clear up some information that's floating around out there about how long it takes to build a first-class pool in the existing location. I think facts are really, really important. The simple fact is it takes nine to 10 months, nine to 10 months, nine to 10 months. That information is very easily found all over the place, very close to us at multiple facilities. That can be picked up very easily. I say this because everyone should know it. I also say it because I know some parents have been sent some communication to push the school board to consider a three-year window that it may take. That is factually incorrect and it's drastically off-base. I just want you to have the facts. I also want parents in water polo, parents and water polo players to know, the neighborhood and the community support the team. They support the pool and they support the players. The way this is happening is the issue. That's the key. A sensible pool option is to expand it within the existing space. The school district's architect has now drawn up renderings that show pools from 35 to 50 meters would all easily fit in existing space. This is a faster, much less expensive, much less disruptive than the approach in the original plan. That's a sensible option. There's also a sensible option for the overall plan. Here, it's critical at this point for the school board to be open to actively changing the plan or continuing to risk getting very little accomplished. If you were at the high school open house, as some of you were, you would have clearly seen the community is willing over at this point. This is a very difficult situation. It does not support, the community does not support tearing up five-year-old tennis courts to move them only 130 yards down the road. It's a very expensive thing to do, or building multi-level parking garages when high school enrollment is down 17% in the last seven years. And the Thurston Middle School feeder is down 30% in the last seven years. Or constructing multi-story buildings that can all create massive congestion, block views, and reduce home price values. There are also some rumblings around the home price situation. The sensible answer is to embrace all input and instruct the facilities team to work with all groups in the room and those online and those who will come to future meetings. Please incorporate neighborhood and community input into the process through workshops and base decisions on real data that is analytically and fiscally sound and fact-checked. I urge the school board to embrace the help being offered by the neighborhood and broader community. We want to help you. We want to help the pool and the other facets of the original plan if.
That's three minutes.
Mr. Brown. And if Mr. McIntosh could come on up in just a second. Steve, Mr. McIntosh will be followed by Derek Day.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here to address the facilities master plan. You might have guessed here at the high school, AKA the $150 million Aquatics Center Plan. As we know, neighbors and citizens found out about this plan at the last second before the last special facilities meeting up here. People were a little bit upset, to say the least, about being blindsided and having no input, which appears, apparently, is not too much to ask elsewhere in the state. The California Department of Education, the CDE, puts out what they call Essentials in School Facility Planning. That's this document here. It starts off and says, "The California Department of Education supports the development of comprehensive facilities management plans, FMPs, with local community input as an essential component to providing all students with safe and educationally supportive learning environments." That's one of the, that's the first thing they say. Later on, "Process to use to develop masters plans. FMP should be developed with a wide range of community stakeholders to ensure that multiple perspectives are included. Many districts find community workshops to be beneficial in both understanding the facility needs of each school and building support for the plan and any future financing efforts." Finally, approval by the governing board demonstrates the significance of the FMP and the plan, that the plan has a high level of support. And if you were at the open house meeting, I think you'd find out that there was not a high level of support. So for those of you, we didn't have a high, wide range of community stakeholders. We had a facilities committee that was made up of the superintendent, assistant superintendent, principals, district employees, architect employees, two board members, and school power members, including the president of school power, barely anyone that lives in Laguna. So no one, no one trusts this process, people. This is why. So for those of you that weren't there at the open house on May 2nd, who knows what got to you? And that was my concern, that no one was going to be there to understand. The planned view of the posters were set up, including a few with new changes, which is very encouraging. However, none of the plans were labeled and the renderings were intermingled to where people were very confused. People kept asking, who do I talk to? Who do I talk to? Areas were staffed by district employees and architect employees, none with name tags, which confused attendees even more. People came looking for a presentation and an exchange and left more angry and confused than ever with more questions unanswered. So with May 23rd looming, what is the district's plan to have a discussion and answer questions about alternatives and such, not just one-word reasons and submitted questions? And have any of the board members seen any of the submitted digitally questions through the district website? Just a question for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Following Mr. McIntosh, we have Derek Day coming to the podium. If we could hold our applause, we want to hear as many comments as possible. Derek, you're going to be.
Looking forward to the applause, though.
Thank you. I know. Thank you. You're going to be followed by Mrs. Brashay. Go ahead, Derek.
Hello, Derek Day. Well, consider me representing Laguna Beach Water Polo Foundation. We're kind of here just to be present in our support for the district and your plan, and we're here if you need us.
I barely got your name written down. Elaine, are you coming to the podium? Thank you. Sorry, big agenda. And following Elaine, we have Sherry Morgan. If there's any other green cards, I need them brought up to the superintendent, please, so we can move through these. Go ahead, Elaine.
Okay. Thank you so much. I won't take much of your time. I'm here to not state the obvious. You all know it. And if you don't know, I'm actually a neighbor and I've invited a few of the board members to come and see our neighborhood one-on-one. I know you may have been able to tour it with maybe some district personnel, but I think it might behoove you to visit us as neighbors to kind of get an understanding of how special it really is. That being said, I do feel, even though the process is a mystery to some of us, it could be communicated a little bit better. I think that might benefit you as well as us. I do want to say that I'm encouraged. I actually came up here to say thank you for actually doing some listening, because when I showed up to the May 2nd, found my way to where I needed to go and who I needed to talk to, I saw a new proposal. And that new proposal was working with the existing pool. And that, to me, was encouragement, because I felt like we were somewhat being heard. And that, to me, was the reason why I'm standing before you, because I'm encouraged that we can continue to keep the communication open. You can continue to listen and we can work together to come up with a solution that benefits everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Sherry Morgan, come to the podium, please. And Sherry, you'll be followed by Elena Rowe. Go ahead.
See if I can filter through some of my edits here. I love delete and edit when I write, but not when I speak. Okay, so I attended all four of the open houses for a lot of reasons. One, because I like to kind of just get a feel for what's really happening. And I think it's really clear that the community has a lot of trust in the fact that you are going to be wise in keeping our facilities updated and modernized. It's this expansive city block monstrosity that you're proposing that has got the community upset. I do not live in the area. But I do pay taxes, so I, so, you know, as I said to somebody at the recreation committee meeting the other night, we all have a vested interest because we do pay taxes. And so that is why a lot of people are here, and a lot of people are here because they live in the area. I think you could have saved a lot of money by not having the TOW and Elmore and Thurston open houses, because that took staffing. It took architects. Although I appreciate the attempt to have the community outreach, I think that at the end of the day, that was one of the first times we've ever done that. And while I think it was a good idea, one might want to ask, you know, why did we do that in the three schools where it wasn't really controversial? It would have been better suited if you had a much more town hall approach, which is what the community asked for. They wanted a back-and-forth opportunity where they could ask questions, where you would answer, answer them, and everybody could hear each other's answers. That's what they asked for. It was very clear. We all heard it, and it's not what you delivered. And I think that's part of where some of the frustration comes. I agree. I was at the May 2nd meeting. It was nice to see that some of the some of the suggestions were being incorporated. But again, that was through social media, through outreach, through email. We didn't need to pay staff and everything to gather all that after hours, because it was all done through the traditional ways of actually communicating with each other. So I'm still shocked that this process of community input is still a challenge for this board, because I know I've stood here before you for years and said, why are you not asking your community, your constituents that you serve, what they need? Not what the teachers need. I love our teachers, but they are paid to work here. These are the people that pay that money to work, to have these people enjoy living, working here in a safe environment. You need to listen to the people that live here. For tonight, I must say, I was a little disappointed for the emphasis on it's not the topic tonight. It is almost like saying, don't come, because we're not going to, you know, be discussing it. So that was that. But I will say that at the last board meeting, it was so refreshing to have a discussion amongst the board that actually took the community and the parents' perspective in mind and lead the discussion from that perspective, that the fact that the pool has been reoriented in the next, some of these next ideas gives me hope.
That's three minutes.
Thank you, Mrs. Morgan. Mrs. Rowe, if you could come to the podium, please. Mrs. Rowe will be followed by Casey Raquel. Last call for public comment cards in this, on this item. Okay, go ahead, Mrs. Rowe.
Okay, so I'm up here last minute. My daughter's playing water polo at the 10U team right now, and you know, they got a lot of heart down there. My daughter was playing on the B team and she scored 19 goals in a tournament last weekend, and she's very proud of herself. 12U coach is, thank you. The 12U coach is, you know, saying that they're looking forward to her coming onto their team. I don't know when this plan would, would take place, but if you build in the existing place, you're going to shut down those programs. And I know that I've come to you guys to, when you shut down CLC at Top of the World, and you guys said it was just a pause. Long pause, because you know what? My daughter has just turned 10 and she never got to go to that program. Okay, and we, I wasn't even fighting for her to be able to go, but for the kids who needed it for medical needs. Come back to this. You shut down this program. You don't have the swimming lessons. You don't have splash ball. You don't have water polo. You don't have the, for the adults, the rec swim, anything. And what's going to be the worst part of it is for the kids who are missing out during the one to three years that it takes. And we know how that can go. One to three years means more like three to five. Let's just say you do get it in the one to three years. You've got all these kids who are in a developmental program for water polo, which Laguna Beach should be known for, because you've produced Olympic players. And you should be very proud of that. And your focus should be on the taxpayers who are paying for those kids to go through all of those programs. It's not cheap, let me tell you that. And they are looking forward to scholarships, so that they can afford to put their kids through college after being broken down in all the things that they're paying for, which includes the money that they pay for you guys to do your work. So I think that you guys need to listen to a plan that unfortunately will involve moving the tennis courts, and they should have thought about that before they built the tennis courts, because there's plenty of tennis courts in Laguna Beach. If they were going to redo those, they should have been listening to us back then. So I don't really care about moving those tennis courts, however little distance they are. It's, it's worth it to keep the programs going, so that the kids will have an uninterrupted program. The kids who are looking for scholarships, we would definitely need a scholarship. And it's, there's not going to be scouting. There's going to be a whole drop in the program. And if you're worried about enrollment numbers going down, they're going to go down further, because these kids are going to start going to other clubs, other programs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rowe. Mr. Raquel, if you could, Mr. Raquel, if you come up, and that will be the last speaker on this. Go ahead.
I'm a 17-year resident of Bluemont Street and a parent of a senior and a sophomore at LBHS. My senior served on as the student representative last year. And I just want to say that LBUSD has provided an incredible education and happy home to both of our high schoolers, which I guess is part of the reason why the original proposal surprised me so much. All of my comments relate to that proposal. I could support focus proposal on reworking with the existing school site, or I don't know if it's been considered to work with the St. Catherine's site to provide a pool at that site. So the, you know, with regards to living on Bluemont Street, I don't see the parking garage in fitting with the character of Bluemont Street and the approach to Park Avenue. It's just completely, completely out of character with the neighborhood, with Virginia Park. Clearly, with the original proposal, we'd be looking at years of traffic noise and environmental impacts to the neighborhood. It's, it seems to create more problems than it solves. The cons seem like it outweighed the pros, even if it were free. And obviously, it's far from free. I'm having trouble understanding how with declining enrollment, we need more parking and more infrastructure. To me, the money could be spent much better on, on teachers and on programs that serve all of the students at the school. There was a comment with regard to tennis courts. There's not enough tennis courts in Laguna Beach, since they're all been repurposed towards pickleball, it seems. That's it. Hope, hopefully, focus on reworking with, focus on the existing pool site. Thank you.
Thank you.
President Bickers, that was the last card.
Thank you. Next move to our section six on reports, and we begin with our student board rep, Zoe.
Good evening, everyone. So to begin with Elmore and Top of the World, state testing began this week with third and fourth grade students beginning the English Language Arts portion and with fifth graders beginning the science test. Many field trips have taken place over the past couple of weeks, including a guest speaker and animals brought in for first graders and a trip to the Laguna Art Museum and a visit to the Cristocove State Park as well. Both schools hosted their annual Angels Day in April and welcomed two players, which created a lot of excitement among staff and students. The talent shows took place this past week at both schools, featuring impressive acts such as singing, dancing, and instrumental performances. And lastly, the two schools hosted two new student TK Kinder School tours and posted a virtual information session for new families. At Thurston Middle School, testing season is underway for both CASP and iReady testing, where students have been working hard to showcase their learning and show the community that we are a district of excellence. They give a big thank you to Andy Crisp, Alexis Carroll, and Randy Beckley for creating great resources to boost students' motivation. Coming up are the eighth grade end-of-the-year events. They're looking forward to closing out the year with the eighth grade dams, the Knott's Berry Farm, and the yearbook signing party. And they give a big thank you to PTA for all their support with these end-of-the-year activities. Finally, at Laguna Beach High School, we're currently taking applications for the next round of student board representatives in the current junior and sophomore class, and Nick and I look forward to participating in those interviews. We want to give a big thanks to the district and PTA for making Staff Appreciation Week special and thoughtful. Recently, Prom Reveal just passed, announcing the theme A Night at the Oscars. AP testing is almost over for the regular cycle, and as we wrap up AP testing, we will also be wrapping up iReady testing. And lastly, graduation festivities as well as finals are coming up soon, and LBHS hosted an LCAP panel, student panel, where students discuss their experiences in the district. Students shared feedback regarding the district's goals around inclusivity. They identified and discussed on-campus resources they have used to feel more connected to campus and have their voice heard. And there were many productive conversations regarding inclusivity, connectivity, and community on LBSD's campuses. Thank you.
Thank you. We have, our bargaining unit representatives are not with us tonight, so we'll move to our next report from our SRO.
President Bickers, could I make a comment to our student board rep on the high school?
Pardon me?
Could I make a comment to?
Yes.
Yes. I just wanted to commend the high school ASV. It seems like we've been hearing all year how the attendance at all of the high school events has been more than they've ever seen before. You know, this event sold out, or this event was really popular. So whatever you guys are doing there to make, you know, students feel connected and to come to those events, I just wanted to commend you guys, especially as you get to prom as the last one. It's great to see everybody attending those events in such record numbers. So, thank you, guys.
I'll second that. You're doing a fantastic job. Good evening, board members and everyone. And it's been a while since my last report, so I have a couple of things that I want to touch base on. First and foremost, I'm sure everybody is aware of a couple of the events that have happened over the last week with these school threats on social media. I just want everybody here to know that our number one priority is student safety. So we don't take any of these lightly. Over the last couple of threats, we've had increased presence at all the schools. We've worked in collaboration with the district and pushing out information so parents were aware of what was happening. And the vagueness of the threats and that it wasn't specific to Laguna Beach, but nonetheless, we don't take it lightly, and we address it as it comes in. So I'm sure this probably won't be the last that we see, but just rest assured that we are going to continue to have that presence and have that same response that we do for each one. So moving on to some, some happier stuff. We recently had a Cookie with the Cop event up here at Thurston Middle School. We had K-9 Cooper come up for it. Our chief nearly got trampled as the students were running up to the cookies. And I'll take blame. We did not have enough cookies. I was not sure how many students would actually partake. So I learned from that. So the next one we have, I'll have ample cookies for the students. But nonetheless, it was a really, really fun event for the kids. And it goes to show how the school resource officer position is working as far as the kids are just running up to us now. So it's really cool to see that, that letting their guard down and realizing that we're just people and we can come up and have fun and have a cookie together. So that was, that was a lot of fun. We have our bike safety expo coming up on May 21st. I'd like to thank the district for allowing us to utilize Top of the World Campus for that event. And we're expecting a good turnout this year. We have a signed skateboard from Tony Hawk that he donated. Troy Lee was kind enough to bring a bunch of bike helmets for us. So we're going to have a ton of fun with that. Something I do want to touch upon to is e-bikes. So I know it's been an ongoing conversation, but we've, we've gotten some data back. And overall, over the last year, since we implemented the program here at Thurston, we've had a serious decline in overall accidents. We have a serious decline in calls for service around, around the city. A decline in an overall tickets being handed out. So very proud of that, and I want to continue to see that positive momentum moving forward. More, more classes are to come next year here at Thurston for the kids that get their bikes over the summer. It's just going to be ongoing. What else? Our Teen Leadership Academy is coming up, July 10th through the 13th, which we're excited about. A lot of work goes into it, but the kids that do attend, by the end of it, always have nothing but good things to say about it, and it really prepares them for the future. And we're looking forward to the third year, fourth annual Teen Leadership Academy. So I think that's it. So I appreciate your time and looking forward to graduation and the event on the 7th with the grad parade as well. So that's going to be a ton of fun. So, thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for Officer?
Do you have any questions for Officer?
I just want to make a comment to Officer Yielding. I had heard that the, they did a traffic study on adding a bike lane to Thurston. So between high school and the Thurston on Park Avenue. And that had been in the city's plans to investigate that this year. And I got an update that Public Works has received draft plans and the city engineer is looking at them and is commenting them. So I think it looks very hopeful that it's been thoroughly studied and hopefully could be implemented. I'm personally pushing for like a green bike lane or something really visible because I feel like even though it's a short period of time where we put eighty e-bikes onto Park Avenue, that it helps remind the kids and the drivers of that shared space. So whatever you could do to support that and comment on that, since you have experiences. I've also shared some video of what that looks like, you know, principal of a doll sees it each day. But I think for our city leadership and for the city engineer to see the confluence of pedestrians, crosswalk, crossing guards, e-bikers, regular drivers and people picking up students in and out is really important. So I just want to make it clear.
Could say absolutely.
Yeah.
So first of all, thanks for all the work with the kids. It's very important to have your presence there. I just wanted to add to the e-bike conversation. I live on Park Avenue and it has gotten much better in terms of e-bike safety. And I appreciate all the efforts at the school. I would like to put in a little bit of a plug for doing something about the drivers. There's ongoing discussions on Nextdoor and everywhere about all these kids who don't have traffic safety. I see people passing people on Park Avenue. There's a period of time in the morning where there are like thirty e-bikes racing down Park Avenue very quick. They're not doing anything wrong. They're kids going to school and then cars driving really fast up and down the avenue. And so both on Park Avenue and in other areas, Temple Hills, there are other hotspots where we're really not enforcing traffic. And I see that as being really central to the safety of the kids on their e-bike. So I don't want to forget that piece of it.
Absolutely. And unfortunate for us, we have a new neighborhood enforcement team and part of that team is our traffic division. So I can route that to our sergeant who can kind of take a look at putting normal orders out during certain times of the day.
In the new budget for next year, there's going to be four motorcycle cops that are going to be enforcing traffic. And so I would imagine that that will help immensely. I'm going to hide from them, but.
I stick out like a sore thumb, so I can't, I can't really sit out there. They can hide better than I can on their bikes.
With all these bikes, people have to just drive more slowly. There's a lot of bikes out.
It's, it's responsibility of the e-bikers, but it's also responsibility of the drivers as well.
Thank you.
I just wanted to thank you also for putting safety first. I know yesterday after school, I went to Elmore and there were four officers there. And I said, what are you guys doing here? And they said, we're just, we, you know, you know about the threats that have happened. We just want to keep people safe and make sure that our presence is here. And one of the officers, Pablo, was one of my former students and he gave me a big hug and said, you know, I want to keep you safe. So I really appreciate that and I feel safe with you guys.
It's our pleasure.
Officer Yielding, is it legal to pass the school buses? Because related to member Malcheski's, our, our school bus providers do occasionally pull over and then basically encourage drivers who are impatient that they're going up a ten percent grade behind a school bus to, to go and pass them on the left. I'm just wondering if that's even legal. It happens going up and down the hills, but.
I, I wouldn't promote it if, if the stop, stoplights or have the other red lights flashing, you most certainly cannot pass.
I think you're referring to them, they're slower so they move over for the traffic to pass.
Correct. The school bus is moving into the right and letting cars pass on the left, which is a very generous and thoughtful move. But it also is facilitating this idea to member Malcheski's that you're going too slow, school bus. So I'm going to pass you on Park Avenue.
I know that obviously parking has a serious, serious grade and they, they do crawl up that. And there's, you know, ample room on the side. I'm not going to promote it, but it is like you said, it, it is if they pull over the side like they're, they're going to park and they pass. There's certain areas that you can't obviously where the road narrows, but there's parking up Park Avenue. And again, I'm not going to promote it, but.
Okay. I didn't think you could pass on that. That's where in a different country.
Well, I think you find that like a large truck that's heavy and loaded and slow will do the same thing. They do it also in Temple, Temple Hills. Because they don't want to impede the traffic. I mean.
As long as it's done safely.
Yeah. The passing I'm talking about is people going like fifty or sixty miles an hour and zooming out around people with e-bikes coming the other way. It's just dangerous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a report from Superintendent Dr. Valoria.
It's been a busy couple of weeks. I'll start off, we had a mini legislative action day with the Orange County superintendents at the county office. We had Senator Newman, who is the chair of the education committee at the state level. Senator Umberg was there, Assemblywoman Querc Silva. And then we had several aides and field reps from, from other, other folks there as well. It just gave us an opportunity locally to talk about some of the things that are really important to us. Obviously, mental health was at the forefront. So I had the opportunity to address, to address all the legislators, which was nice because I was up there recently as well. So it was just another opportunity for many of us to reestablish that relationship. This is the first time we've done that and Senator Newman was very happy and wants to do it on a more annual basis, which is fantastic to hear. I think it's just a good opportunity for us to make those connections so that they understand some of the implications of some of the laws that they create and oftentimes without a whole lot of feedback from those that it affects, especially on education. And they even admitted that education seems to be a place where they like to pass lots of laws. So that being said, it was a great opportunity for us and I appreciate the Department of Education for, and their staff for kind of taking the time. And for Andrea Ball, who's, she's one of the members of Ball Frost, who's in a group that we utilize as a lobbyist group. And Andrea really helped set that up as well. So special thanks to her. We had, as mentioned, our open house at the high school. We're working through trying to respond in a thoughtful manner to the, all the questions that we received and the comments. We'll be sharing those with the board as well. We're working on an FAQ for the website. Website, if you go on our regular website now, you'll see a direct link to the facilities master plan. And so people can click on that. It has all the different kinds of updates and iterations that were shown at the, at that meeting. And we look forward to kind of circling back with the board, getting some more direction, some next steps at the twenty-third, which is coming very shortly. And staff appreciation, I think, was mentioned by our student board rep. Special thanks to all of, all the folks involved in that. I know Mike will, will talk a little more about that, so I don't want to take all of his thunder. And last, but certainly not least, just a special thanks to the PTA. I think we're kind of coming up on, this was our, I think, kind of our last formal meeting. And just been really a privilege to be able to go and, and sit with them on Thursdays up in ninety-one and with Jim. We also host, you know, the, that Monday before every PTA council meeting, my team hosts the PTA presidents. And we sit down and hear, you know, what concerns, what are things that there are topics that are popping up, things that we might want to address with the whole group on the fourth. It's just a nice opportunity to have a real good two-way conversation with, with the PTA leaders. So just a fantastic group and I know Jim probably will say the same thing, just great leadership just all around and, and I'm just amazed at what they put together. So with that, the end of my report.
Thank you. We move to our assistants, Mr. Dixon.
Thank you. I'll be brief as I was not able to attend the high school open house. But I do want to say thank you to all those who participated in that and all the open houses. The feedback we've got has been robust and we are going through it. Special thanks, Dr. Valoria and Anna Karen, who've been helping us compile this information and make sure it's succinct and readable as possible as we go to answer these questions for our community and incorporate any changes or modifications to the plan as needed as we go through this process. We did have our sustainability task force meeting last week. As we wrap that up for the year, we've made great progress, but I would like to just emphasize that we are in the thick now of developing the operational plan to get us to carbon neutrality. And that's something that Mr. Zade and myself are working on through now. And we hopefully have it done by this summer so that we have a roadmap going forward and we're really excited about that. And as we look to next year, which is odd to say, we're looking at next year already. We want to look at how the partnership with Green Schools National Network could evolve as we've now have the environmental coordinator who will be coming on board and there'll be a stronger instructional component to tie it all together. We want to take advantage of our partnership with them to give them whatever tools that we have at our hands to be successful as we continue to move forward with our sustainability progress. So really looking forward to it next year and I thank the board again for the direction we got. Made great progress, but there's still ways to go and we're excited to get there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Conlon.
Yes, thank you, President Vickers. As Dr. Valoria mentioned, we enjoyed celebrating our employees with Staff Appreciation Week, the week of May first. Kudos to Jennifer D'Anseau and Victoria Weber for coordinating the festivities with a theme of Laguna Land, the happiest place to work. An e-ticket was emailed to all staff detailing that each day's events. And we weaved in the district's sustainability initiatives as well with several environmentally friendly gifts throughout the week. And it culminated with a CASP lunch hosted by district office team at each school site. So it was a, it was a lovely week. And then we want to, this past Monday, we were lucky enough to recognize Mr. Mike Morrison as the Chief Technology Officer of the Year for AXA in our region seventeen. Again, it was just great to, he's done amazing work. So it was really nice to have a night for him to be honored in a room that, with a lot of colleagues of his and that everyone truly was in agreement, the amazing work that he does to support our students in our school. So kudos to Mr. Morrison. And then of course negotiations as our shares in full swing. We had day four of CSA negotiations on yesterday, day five with the teachers tomorrow. And then from a staffing perspective, we're actively recruiting for a second elementary of Vapatosha. So we'll have one assigned each elementary site. That's in the process. The LBHS art position and K-12 vocal music positions are in the final stages as well. And then on the horizon, we have postings for community liaison, communication media specialist and our coordinator of environmental literacy. And then we're also keeping a close eye on the elementary numbers to, to we can finalize our staffing needs at both elementary sites in the coming weeks. That's all.
Thank you. Josh Mayberry.
Thank you. I'll be brief as well, just echoing everybody. As you can see, there's a lot going on at schools right now. And one of my roles is to support the, the school leadership, each of those schools. And I did want to give a special thank you to the principals and their teams that are in this room right now. When I'm working with them and you're on the campus, you can see all the different events going on that they're planning for and they're getting ready for the end of year activities and dances. And sports events are still going on, while at the same time, we're planning for everything for next year. And so I know how busy this is for, especially for the principals and their leadership team. So I did want to make sure we was able to thank them. Thank you.
Thank you. Move to our.
Yes. Mike, I wanted to know what you're doing with all of your spare time since you're hiring such a small pool this year compared to what you did last year.
Yeah, don't give me flashbacks. That was, that was, that was quite the process last year. But I'm, you know, I'm finding ways to fill my time, Jim.
Move to our business action item, item seven, approval of resolution number twenty-three dash zero seven. Resolution of the Board of Education, acting as the legislative body of Community Facilities District number ninety-eight dash one of Laguna Beach Unified School District, authorizing the levy of special taxes within Community Facilities District number ninety-eight dash one for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Mr. Dixon.
There was no public comments received.
Thank you, President Vickers. This is a resolution is an annual requirement as the administration of the Community Facilities District ninety-eight dash one. It authorizes the levy of special taxes to repay the debts brought on by the CFD. These funds are outside of our general fund. And the one thing that I would like to point out in the report, as we have been getting questions over the years, is there is an appendix A that defines the boundary and shows on a map where the CFD is located within our city. And it's very helpful because this question does come up and it comes up at odd times. So as a reference point, just want to call out appendix A for the board's review. Thank you.
Are there any questions on this? If not, ask for motion, please. Any discussion? Do we have a roll call? Do we use student or do I do student?
I'll do it.
Thank you.
Nick? Clerk Osborne? Member Perry? Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Malcheski?
Yes.
President Vickers?
Yes.
Next, we have a couple of instruction action items on section eight. A approval of agreement with Institute for Multisensory Education IMSA to provide in-person comprehensive Orton-Gillingham plus training for teachers and classified staff in August twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. I wanted to give a just a little bit of background.
Sorry, are there any public comments on this?
None received.
Thank you.
I'm really excited. So I want to give a little bit of background of this item. This, this item bringing forward, we're bringing forward Orton-Gillingham training for our teachers. There's a significant cost to it. And so, but this really, this is something that we really became a part of what we did after AB thirteen, I think it's thirteen sixty-nine, where the state had to develop dyslexia guidelines that were researched based on current research. And so, so over a little bit over five years ago, we really started investing in this and our focus was around K-one teachers and special education teachers and reading specialists, the people who are helping their students learn to read the most. And so we did some trainings back there with the board's support that were in person. And we've continued to do that as much as we could. Obviously shortly after, you know, a few years ago with the pandemic, we, we kind of had to pause on some of it. We're doing some virtual training since then. But these were, but these are, all these trainings really align well with our, our reading program. The adopted curriculum at the elementary level is wonders at the secondary level at Studies Think. But the all, the whole reading program as a whole, not just the actual curriculum, is really based around the national reading panels, five essential reading components. So a fine exfluency vocabulary, phonemic, phonemic awareness and comprehension. It's based in scientific and evidence-based research. It's something that we are constantly evolving and adding to and making better. This training expect, continue, will continue to expand that training. Right now, we currently have, I believe, almost seventy staff members that have been trained in Orton-Gillingham strategies. Orton-Gillingham strategies also impact our MTSS. We've talked about that at a lot of meetings. This is our, our multi-tier system of support, which is not just for students that might be struggling. This is for all students. So there's a very structured way to target interventions for all students that need it, whether that's for a little bit or a lot. But what, the way we use our Orton-Gillingham strategies for this structured literacy approach is we use it in our tier one instruction. So it is used in the classroom along with that core curriculum. But then it also allows us to integrate it into our MTSS. So we have our universal screeners, one of which we're talking about with iReady. It's coming up at the, at the next item, Dibbles, the BPST. So these different ones that we're using and really the purpose of the screening is to look for students that might be at risk. Then we do the diagnostic where we're trying to really pinpoint exactly what students need. We'll set up interventions. We go through an intervention cycle. Those intervention cycles are typically about six weeks, give or take the time of year where it falls. We progress monitor them using some of these assessments that we, that I just mentioned. They evaluate whether it works or not, and that may lead to another assessment. It might lead to something deeper. But what's nice about the Orton-Gillingham strategies is they work for both. They work for our tier one, our best first instruction, and they also work in our intervention. So we may have mentioned before Sunday system. It's another program that we have in our intervention that typically is for students that are in the tier two or tier three levels. We also use that program in the summer. That is based around Orton-Gillingham strategies. And so this training aligns to a lot of the work we're doing in our reading program. This piece here where we're kind of connecting it gives a little bit of an overview. But if you can see there on the bottom of the screen, it points to the next phase of training. So we continue to try to train people. It's a five-day training. It was pretty intense. There's a comprehensive training that's for lower grades and there's a morphology training that's for upper grades or students that maybe can read a little bit, but are still struggling with language comprehension. And so this one in the fall would be for comprehensive training that we do before school starts, you know, in the summer. And then we might likely would have some during the school year for some that maybe can't make it then. And then we, our goal would be to have the morphology one next the following summer. And so we have a lot of teachers that have had this. Like I said, I think almost seventy have between, some of those are IA's, some of those are reading specialists, parent educators and teachers. But what's been nice is the first time they went through it, a lot of them were asking for it again. The materials have actually been updated recently within the last year. The materials have actually been updated recently within the last year. So they also want the training so that they can align with the work that they're doing and the new materials that could, that are, you know, this organization has updated that we use so frequently. So we're bringing this forward to you for, for your review and approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions on this?
Dr. Mayberry, you said about 70% of staff are currently OG trained?
Seventy, not staff members, not percent.
Okay, that, okay, that, that matches. So and is the, the amount of the TK through second consistent with the third through five? So everybody like even third through five is already the original training and the morphology?
We originally focused, we originally did focus on this five years ago. We focused on K-1. So we have some second grade teachers, I think maybe five of them that have had this training. But it was the, it was the morphology, which used to be called intermediate. And so some of them have not had this one. So they actually want, they want, they want both because second grade is, third grade are kind of that grade level where some kids are still learning to read, but some are moving on. So we want to offer this to our second grade teachers this time as well. And then we have some upper grade ones that we've said if there's space available, you certainly, they can do this training as well. But it doesn't apply to our third, fourth and fifth grade teachers as much. It applies more to the people that are like doing the intervention and supporting students that maybe are still not full readers at that time.
Is the morphology for the third through fifth grade, is that also a five-day training?
Yes.
And that would be on, onsite, like how you're envisioning the K through second where the trainer comes to us?
Yeah. Yeah. And so like we look back like the ones that have done it. We have like, there's two teachers, two English teachers at the middle school and there's two English teachers at the high school that did the morphology one previously. And so I know that that was five years ago. And so, so if we would offer that in a year from now, I'd assume them and maybe a few others might want to do some training as well. You know, you're working with your small groups that you have these very research-based strategies. And then the other piece I did mention here, beyond those two trainings is there's some certifications. And so after this training is done, we want to move into the school year and find our ones that work with them the most frequently, which will be reading teachers, parent educators, we have a couple of IA's that are working our reading intervention room plus special education teachers, speech and language pathologists, and get them extra certifications beyond this level. So it's like a pretty, it's much more intense level of training.
Okay. Yeah, I think this is so important. So I think, you know, my original line of questioning was anybody that has not yet been trained definitely needs to be trained. So if there were more teachers that hadn't been trained in morphology, you know, that's still really important, reading comprehension in third through fifth grade, then maybe we need to train them first. But it sounds like we already have 100% compliance.
It's, well, it's, I wouldn't say it's quite 100%, but if they don't have it, they, we have something scheduled with them in the fall.
Okay.
Where they would do a virtual one, which is obviously we want that we prefer to have a person. But if we can do it sooner with virtual, we offer that to them.
Okay, that's great. Yep, I definitely support that.
Any other questions? If not, ask for motion, please. Any discussion?
I got an email from a parent, this first time I've ever gotten an email from a parent concerning one of our contracts. And she was just so impressed with this program and so thankful that we have operationalized it. She just wished that we had done it earlier. And as a kid who had learning disabilities and never had any supports, I sure wish that I had this when I was a kid.
Yes, that was a really nice letter. And I think now students will be getting it like in first grade and not waiting till third. I also was looking at programs across the state in different school districts. And a lot of them are starting to have this program. And I thought, well, gosh, we're, we're way ahead of the game and even nationwide because they're going back to realizing how important phonics are and how important multisensory is. So kudos to you and everybody who brought this to our district early.
It's been very well supported by staff and it's such a critical area. And to have more instruction and more training in how to accomplish this is, has always been well received.
And I'll just add to that. I mean, it's a five-day training all day, right? So it's not, having facilitated a lot of PD in my career, there's not a lot of five-day trainings around something this specific that I get, we get this good feedback on. So that says a lot about not just the quality of the training, but like how important it is to the teachers that are facilitating that work with students.
Any other discussion? Student vote? All in favor? Aye, opposed, carries 5-0. Next is 8B, approval of agreement with Curriculum Associates to provide district-wide iReady licenses, teacher toolbox access and professional development in an amount not to exceed 87,000.
Thank you.
Any public comment on this item?
None received.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we'll bring this one forward. As you know, we've mentioned iReady assessments quite a bit. And it's really the key, one of the key components to our MTSS. It's across all four schools now. We assess and screen students K through 10, K through eight, three times, and sometimes in math, four times. Sec, the high school does it twice, ninth and 10th. And then beyond just the assessments, it's also allowed us to provide resources. There's lessons built in. It's really personalized. What we like working with them is they constantly evolve the product. It's every year it seems to get better, like this teacher toolbox that was added. We use it for interventions during the day, after school, in the summer. And then some teachers actually will personalize that to use it for just ongoing homework at the elementary level. And then we've also, it's, we've done a lot of work around professional learning communities and the essential standards and essential learning outcomes. And then from there, they'll create these common form of assessments and these real key themes that are essential at each grade level. What we're seeing teachers do is a lot of them are be able to pull some of the questions out of here to add some, to make it a little bit easier to align across teachers and schools on these really key, important ideas. So that's part of their standard mastery piece, which is another component that we've been using a lot the last two years. So we're bringing this forward for next year. And so we wanted to get your review and approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions on this? Not asked for motion? Any discussion?
Dr. Mayberry, do you feel, I wasn't sure President Vickers' question or discussion, but at the ninth and 10th grade level, since we're adding additional licenses, obviously that's a big chunk that teachers are using it to inform instruction during the school year since it's administered twice. I'm not advocating for administering it, administering it more, but it's new to that site and that level. So do we feel like it's informing instruction?
I feel like it's made a lot of growth this year in that area. They have a staff member in the math and a staff member in the English department that are dedicated to look at this among other data points to see how it might fit into different interventions. It's probably still an area of growth, but it was good to see them really rapper, you know, start to dig into this and see how it fits at that ninth and 10th grade level where they haven't had an assessment like this before. And so I know that, and I know they have the plan to continue with those dedicated people to work on that within those key departments.
Yeah, because I think the real benefit is that you have an assessment in the beginning of the year. You still have the student in your class and you could see how the interventions and at the secondary level, it's quite spectacular. You could see how your interventions then on the same assessment at the end of the year worked or don't work before they move on to the next teacher. So I really, I think that it's an area that we, we need to continue to grow and focus on. It's not a state standardized test, right? It's, it's, it's an area to inform instruction in that math or that language arts class. So I hope we're unlocking its power at those grade levels.
Any, go ahead.
I, I agree. I think it's so helpful to have that information at the beginning of the year. When you look at what a student did the previous May, it could have changed a lot over the summer. And you just take more responsibility when they're in your class and you see it and you right away see what their needs are and then you get to see if they make growth. So I really like this.
Any other discussion? I just think, I think it's critical that it helps to let teachers individualize their instruction, to personalize it for the students' needs, for the place where they are, because that's always a challenge for a teacher in a comprehensive classroom. So I definitely support this program. Student vote? All in favor? Aye, opposed, carries 5-0. Thank you. We have a consent calendar. Are there any public comment cards on the consent calendar?
None received.
Thank you. Then are there any items between consent colored items C and N that board members would like to pull off?
Just for discussion.
If you want to discuss it, you need to pull it off.
I would like to pull off item K.
Okay. That's the agreement with Strategic Kids. Okay. Then now I would ask for a motion for items C through N except for K. Okay. We need to wait for. Yeah. Member Perry, did, did Clerk Osborne ask us to wait or to go ahead? When she's. Okay. I guess we don't need to wait if it's consent. Okay, well, we'll go ahead. Yes, student vote?
Yeah.
All in favor? Aye, opposed. We have item K, so we don't know, I guess there's no public comment on K. And Member Perry, you pulled this off, so we need to. Okay. Do I have a motion first or just? She can ask questions. Let's, okay, question.
Because I can't make a comment, so make it into a question?
No, if you have, you're asking a question about it and then we'll have a motion on that.
Okay, no. I'm not asking a question.
Okay. Then a motion, please?
So moved.
Okay, all right.
Okay. I think it's marvelous, all of the different classes that we are going to offer during the summer for our students. My question has to do with that the instructors for these classes are getting $130 an hour for teaching and $45 to clean up. Our teachers that teach summer school, I think, get something like, I don't know, $55 or $47 an hour. And our classified people get, I don't know, something like 22, 25. And even our high school musical director coach that works with all the high school kids on the musicals gets $29 an hour. So perhaps we're really underpaying our people that are working by the hour if we're paying these people 130 an hour. I kind of like the difference between they get paid much more if they're teaching versus cleaning up. But if you look at $45 an hour for cleaning up, some people, that's what they make for actually, well, some people make less than that. It takes them two hours to make that much. I I guess I would just like to look at the fairness of this.
Well, one thing I can add is that our teachers, we do pay them for a significant amount of prep hours. So it's, so their hourly rate, maybe that during instruction, but they're also getting extra hours to prep for the work. Where these ones are doing that, they don't get the prep hours. So that is something to think, to think about as we look at the, the whole picture of all the different how people are paid for that summer work.
Okay, so could you give me an example of a teacher teaching summer school? How, you know, how much would they make including their prep time for a day?
Well, I don't, I don't have that sat in front of me, but you know that one?
So they've got, they get paid for their, I think it's four, look at Betsy really quick, four, four hours for the actually, Betsy, please, since the daughter comes like, quote it properly. She's been coordinating our, our summer lead program. She's got it off the tip of her tongue. That would be accurate.
Hi, so we encourage our teachers to teach multiple courses. So many of our teachers are actually teaching six unique classes because we pay them separately for a unique class, even if it's that a class is modified, say it's an art class K-2 and then a 3-4, we count that as two unique classes. So they're paid for 12 hours of prep ahead of time for every single unique class. So that could be up to 72 hours. I believe the non-instructional rate of pay is 40. Yeah, so I can't do that in my head, but 47, 1072.
Thank you.
And then also additionally, they would get during the day, if they're teaching all day, we give them a paid lunch as well as an extra hour of prep during the day if they're there all day long. So there is plenty of incentive. Our outpouring of support from the teaching community was incredible. And that's because all of our teachers from last year returned because they love the program so much and told their friends, which was awesome.
Yeah.
So we added tons. We have over 100 classes this summer. And we, we hire any of our staff who want a position. And we needed to contract with Strategic Kids just to honestly meet the demand of the community. And those classes are a little bit different because they have specialty equipment. There's Legos. They have to go purchase a lot of different field equipment. You know, the magician has special things like that. So we don't pay for, we're not billed for supply separately. Our teachers get a supply budget in addition. So when you look at the cost, that's kind of the whole picture of it.
That makes me feel much better about it. Thank you so much.
And I think one of the things when you, we see the 130 an hour, we think that's what they're getting, the instructor's getting paid. That's not what the instructor's getting paid. That's what the company's getting paid for that instructor to work there. The company's taking a portion of their own. They're also covering the insurance for that person. So there's a lot of, it's, there's a lot of added costs to Strategic Kids for that. That's why the, the cost is what it is. But that, you know, for us, we try to incentivize as you can see for, to have our own employees do it. But when the, the demand was as high as it was from our community, which is fantastic, I mean, we broke the server. We have a tendency to do that. That happens with the PTA or the school power, the after-school programming there too. We broke that server as well for signup. So we know it's a real big interest. So we wanted to make sure we had enough programs and offerings for our families. So.
Yeah, I just want to add to that, that the fifth grade moms list blew up people like commenting on which courses their kids were taking and how quickly they had to sign up. It is hugely popular about, among both parents and the kids. I mean, some of the students, you know, my, my son's friends were so excited to go back and take courses with teachers that they had in previous years. They were really excited to be able to walk down to Thurston and take a writing class. So it's just really fantastic. So thank you.
Thank you. And we have over 400 students registered so far. And the majority of them are doing the two full weeks, so six unique classes. And so it's a great opportunity to offer this free to our families and they also get free lunch while they're there. We can arrange aftercare for them through the boys and girls if they need it. So it really truly is a great opportunity for the kids to make those connections and discover some new passions.
Yeah, great.
Thank you. It's, it's fabulous to have all these options. I was just feeling a little sorry for the, our teachers, but I understand it much better now. Thank you.
And yeah. Doctor, sorry, President Vickers, Dr. Mayberry, is this still funded with COVID relief dollars, pandemic dollars? Or is this now generally, general fund funded? Because I know we had the two summers and I've lost track of where we are with the two summers of.
More than likely it's general fund. I'll get the exact answer, but most of our pandemic dollars are exhausted by the end of this fiscal year.
Okay, so this was an outcropping of some of the summer learning loss that was bookending the, the big pandemic year. But now we've determined it's a successful program and so we're budgeting that a general fund.
And there, yeah, there's still other restricted funds that you can tap into to support this program as well.
Okay, other categorical things?
Correct.
Okay. Maybe could we get more detail on that in a weekly update? It sounds like it's a popular program, but I'd like to know how we're funding chess and whether we as a board are happy doing that in perpetuity or, or not. Great, thank you.
You can always bring back something and question it in another year. So in a sense, perpetuity doesn't exist in that way. Any other discussion? Student vote? All in favor? Aye, opposed, carries 5-0. Thank you. Now for governance section and it's time for board members to share your reports with us, please.
Thanks, President Vickers. So in the week since our last regular board
regular board meeting, I did attend a School Power trustee meeting, that was on April twenty-sixth, I gave the trustees an overview of the facilities master plan, and looked through some of what had been presented to us and took questions. And we had a good discussion. And I also wanted to make the board aware, I attended a really interesting webinar from Learning Policy Institute or LPI. It was on the, the data behind social emotional learning. And it had summarized twelve meta-analyses, I guess a meta-analysis of other meta-analyses is really interesting. You know, Hammond kind of moderated it, but what stuck out to me was that the data has consistently now shown through these meta-analyses that when we provide really high-quality social emotional learning, that we're seeing an eleven percent academic gain. And I know as a district, we're, we're very far ahead and have accepted this into our culture, but you know, as we look at ways to support social emotional learning with counseling and things like that, I think it's really important to remember that it does impact academics, it's not the standalone thing that has nothing to do with math and reading, and I know sometimes we hear that from the community. So I thought that was really interesting. It's, it's recorded, so if anybody's interested in listening to it, just let me know. I also enjoyed the, the wrap-up meeting on the Sustainability Task Force that Member Perry and I set on this year. And I love how how tangible the actions are that you guys are trying to take this year and how they tie in with the board direction and the resolution twenty-two oh four. I attended all three facility open houses at Top of the World, at Thurston, at Almoro, and I'll share out more feedback. But I did find that it was a conducive format for people to come and ask questions and to engage with the board, engage with staff, engage with the architect, share ideas, that it was really two-way. And we'd been hearing for a long time, we want kind of open back-and-forth communication, so I thought it was a, a nice way to do that. I attended last night the parking demand meeting with the city just to learn about some of the parking challenges. We have a big parking component in our facilities master plan as well. We have our own students that have cars, and I wanted to see how that might overlap with some of the city's needs and some of their short and midterm solutions. And that's it.
Thanks. I attended the Sustainability Task Force also, and I'm excited for next year and the progress that we'll be able to make. I was honored to be part of an interview panel for UCI for students that were getting their masters in education and were looking for jobs. And there are some very impressive candidates out there. I attended the School Power Book Club, and it's doing a wonderful job on building relationships. There were some wonderful discussions, and I met, for instance, two grandmothers that are raising their grandchildren, and their needs are, they're a little bit different in that they are, have to do this a little bit differently than how they manage this with their own children. I worked with some middle school students interested in how to make social and political change using the arts. That was exciting, except there were a lot of them, there were over eighty of them, and they were very excited, I think, to be out of school. Then I also visited an after-school program on creating your own museum. There, there was one at Almoro and one at Top of the World. And the students had some really creative ideas for their own museums. I attended the high school open house, and it was a different experience for me. It was not very conducive to nice conversations. There were so many people there. Clerk Kelly had said, when you go, try to keep track of how many people are there, and, you know, a few of their comments. Well, there were like maybe two hundred people there that came and they went, it was, it was too hard to count. And then when I went, they were, they had the easel set up in different areas, which was great, but there were so many people around them, I couldn't get to them. And then people came up and asked me, well, I thought I knew the plan well. I didn't know that there were two new plans. And they asked me, what do you think of Plan C? What is Plan C? Well, I didn't even know there was a Plan C. So then I had to struggle in and try to see what Plan C was, and I, you know, I, I felt off-guard not even knowing what the plans were there. Some of the, some of the comments that I got were hard to take, they were things like, this is a fiasco. You are in the business of education, and this is a terrible way to inform and educate the public about this project. Who is in charge? Several came to me and said, we should be recalling this board, why aren't you doing oversight? It was it was a little harsh. Maybe.
First, I want to start out with wishing our nurses a happy Nurse Appreciation Week. I know we appreciate everyone at the end of the year together, but I think the nurses need to have something special, they've been outstanding, excellent, and having four nurses in my family who brought this to my attention and were so dissatisfied with, they got an app, an orange and a cookie at one of them, all the administrators got a big luncheon, so I'm very sensitive that we take care of our nurses. I participated in Career Night, which was for parents and and parents and sending their kids the following year to college, it was really an exceptional experience. Lots of really great questions, and the, the career staff did an excellent job, I, I must say. I also, for, this is Mental Health Month, the community coalition canceled their meeting in honor of Mental Health Month, so I have nothing to report on that. I also attended the high school PTA and the, the PTA council meetings, and again, as the superintendent said, just an exceptional group of people who have done so many things and planned so many things, and they, they have jobs and they have children that I just can't believe what they do, and I have nothing but respect for them. The high school people even gave us a breakfast as far as to thank us for volunteering, and so it was, it was I'm so glad that I'm on those groups. I've answered all the emails regarding the Facility Masters Plan, which I was grateful to get, it was really wonderful, community people making wonderful suggestions and being very appropriate, and I just can't believe how nice it was to, to, to be part of that. And I think that's it, thank you.
I attended the Thurston site visit, there were not a lot of people there, but I appreciated that we were giving the opportunity for people to come and see the plans, and we had a couple of community members, so that was good. I also went to the Joint Budget Committee, and I found that to be a very informative and helpful meeting, and I want to thank Mr. Dixon for all of his work kind of setting up explanations for the master plan and how we will develop different possible funding programs depending on what ultimately gets approved in terms of the scope of the project. So at this point, obviously, there's no funding plan because we don't have a project. However, it is important to think about when we get to that point, what those possible funding plans might look like. So that was extremely informative, and I appreciate all the thoughtful work on that.
Thank you. Tying into that at the, at the JFMC meeting, Mr. Dixon had a lot of data, a lot of data, county-wide data, other school district data, so I think as, starting with general information on various funding options and what goes with that, it'll be presented, I believe, at the May twenty-third study session, so that we'll be informed with that, even though there won't be anything specific, that's because we haven't made those decisions yet. I also was at the Almoro and the High School District Office Facilities Meetings. I just would clarify, though, I think our people were identified, I know I was wearing the lanyard, basically our employees wear those when they're on-site. So I think that's, that was a bit of a misrepresentation, but it was, there was a variety, it was, to use Member Perry's words, there were some harshly critical people, but there were also some very receptive and interested people in having discussions and in asking some questions and learning more. It, it was clear to me, as I shared with Dr. Valoria, I always try to say a, a lesson learned. And a lesson learned is that even though the board gave direction with a consensus to hold the open houses, that that was not the expectation of a number of people that came, particularly the people who live in the surrounding neighborhood. And so I think then we're going to look at our May twenty-third meeting as an opportunity to take a step back and incorporate some of that. It's, it's difficult, it's difficult to, to always read what is going to come forward, so we just take that into consideration, which I think is an important gesture that we're making, and I think we are open and receptive, so I hope all of you got that, that same feeling. The, I want to compliment the high school art students on the Art on the Promenade, that was really, really interesting and a, a great outreach to the community to see what our, our high school art students are doing. Want to thank Dr. Allman for attending the Crystal Apple Awards, where we had some of our staff recognized by the students. And let's see that, we have a girls' relay team going to the finals, which is a first for that particular distance. And then, can't remember the ship boy's first name, but he excelled in the diving competition in, in the recent, I think in the league finals for swimming and diving. I think that's all that I have to report, I think it's been very busy, I would just like to make a comment when Dr. Mayberry referred to it's a busy time. I think that I, over the years, I've heard that basically for every time of year, whether it's starting school in the fall, whether it's going to the middle of the year, or whether it's going to the end of the year, and then which, as Dr. Mayberry referred to, includes planning for the next year or what goes on during the summer. And I think that's, I like to hear that because that just tells me that in our district, we're doing all of that with the education of our students as our primary focus. So we, there's a lot of other things going on now, but I think we know that our, our staff are really focused on that. They're really focused on the students, and when we approve these things like the OG training or the are ready, it just enhances their ability to do the best for their students. Thank you. And, Dr. Valoria?
No comment.
So our next, our next meeting is on Tuesday, May twenty-third. I think the time is still a little up in the air, but I mean, at this time, it's five o'clock. Well, that's, I, I think we hadn't really, I hadn't had an opportunity to discuss that further, I know that there's going to be, I don't know that we can do five to seven, because I don't know that if we're going to try to do justice to having it be open, then I don't know, it's a, what do you, we can't decide that right now. But I think you're having some planning meetings next week to.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna, we have a call meetings and then we'll loop back and talk about structure and obviously, I think the, the key is just this constant looping out that we do, right? Is bringing back to the board, get some more direction, loop back out again, right? Keep that communication light and open and, and receive feedback and process feedback and, and continue to, to bring it back and get more direction from you.
I think, is it important for the, the board to kind of determine how much time we want to dedicate to that, like if the board has an interest in having a four-hour study session or a two-hour study session, wouldn't that help determine what we're going to cover?
After the, after the meeting at the high school, after that open house, a, a comment that I made, which doesn't mean it will happen, is that we would have presentations of some of the options that have been put forth, like the ones that were on display at the high school that night, that were alternate options done by, I guess, the architect, because he would have the, and then we would take question and answer period, which is what it seems that people are really asking for. That one makes me a little uncertain of how it would go, because who will the questions be directed to, and will they be like pertinent questions, not just like, why are you doing this to us and you didn't ask us ahead of time? Because that's just repeating what's already been stated, it's not really a question. And then I would have Mr. Dixon make his presentation of, of all the financial components that he's put together, this really with a lot of information. And then it would become the board's time to have some initial discussion among ourselves as to what kind of direction are we going to give, I mean.
That, that's my concern, I just want to make sure that we allocate time for board deliberations, because as a locally elected body, we don't get any other time to talk about this as a team.
Right.
And as a strong governance team, we want to do that in the view of the public, so I want to make sure that.
I think it needs to be a bit open-ended, but I don't want us to be here till, you know, midnight, I mean, that would not be the intent. And I'm not sure that whatever transpires on the twenty-third that we won't need to have another meeting regarding that topic when we see where all of us are landing.
Yeah. And I did, I, I wanted to share the format that they used at this, this parking demand meeting, it was a study session or a presentation where there was public comment, it wasn't a formally notice meeting of the board of all five with deliberations, but they did take lengthy public comment. And people just lined up behind the podium, and public comment went a little faster. But it wasn't a Q and A, because to your point, Member Vickers, that it was people voicing some ideas and some concerns, but there would, there wouldn't be sufficient responses to each of those, so but I did think that you got to hear a lot of input after our presentation, so I, I love that out there to you to think about, but.
So that was basically, that committee was, is two representatives from the council that are on that committee?
Yeah, but it was a public workshop.
Public workshop, but because the whole council wasn't there. Correct? Or not, I don't know, I didn't go.
I can talk with you more about that, but it was.
But I mean, they, they have that as a, they have people line up, that's their standard way of doing it. They have them all come forward, so they, they do it a different way than we do it.
Yeah, so just as we get into this new, new territory.
But I mean, they don't do speaker cards, I mean, they just have the people come forward and line up.
Exactly, so there was a report, and then there was a lot of public input.
Do they, were they limiting the time?
They were. Yeah, they were, I think, to be fair to everybody there.
Right, because you can hear more.
And they also asked to not repeat comments, so if it's already been said, it's been said.
Yeah, I would also suggest that there are a number of questions that have been asked consistently, and it's not that we haven't answered them, but people don't always have the information available, so we may want to find a way to answer some of those consistent questions at the beginning of the meeting, so people feel like their questions are heard. For example, why aren't we building a pool at St. Margaret's? Or is that?
St. Catherine's.
Yeah, sorry, I knew it wasn't St. Margaret's.
St. Margaret's.
So anyway, I, I would suggest that whatever the format is, we do it in such a way that people feel like their questions are being heard and responded to without getting into a situation where we have a series of similar questions that are rhetorical.
So we're working on, so the FAQs, we're billing it out, so we used the basis for all the feedback received on the online form and also the cards that we received, and also some of the questions that we fielded, both from the architect and staff, including myself, who were talking to different folks around just some of the concerns or questions that people continue to bring up, because a lot of them that were redone it in many ways, so we're building that out, so we'll get that pushed out as soon as we can, we'll hopefully have a draft up and available, hopefully tomorrow, we're, we're getting close. But, you know, as more questions come in, we're going to have to add to it, and that's the intent. Because when people start looking at, they may have another question that spawns out of that, so it just takes a little bit of time, thankfully Jeff's back as well, so we've been able to kind of tackle that. So we'll get that out, along with kind of a little bit of a press release around what that's are. Trying to again, communicate publicly that this is the process we're utilizing, getting that, the feedback. But I think to, to, remember Malchesky's point is the more we can front-load folks and have those questions answered, then it allows for a deeper conversation. And I think that's the intent, right, is so get, get that basic information covered. That might be something that is of interest to a lot of people. So encourage people to go, please, we, we're going to keep the forum open as long as we need to, so originally we were going to, we were going to kind of close it on Friday, this Friday, so we can, but we'll just keep it open, so as questions roll in, we'll add to it, so please continue, if people who reach out to you and they have feedback to provide, send them or questions, have them, please direct them to our website. And again, they'll see right there, Facility Master Plans, one of the three tabs, click on that, and then there's a place for comments, so.
So that, what you're referring to could be part of the initial presentation?
I, I think the FAQ, probably not the initial, what we'll push out, we'll have that so the community can access that ahead of time. And then when we sit down and talk about the initial presentation with Mr. Dixon and the architect and and yourself around just structure of what we want to make sure we include in that presentation. And then obviously, I'll, I'll speak with, you know, our staff to make sure that we're covering all the things that need to get covered, including what the interested, you wanted to make sure we all covered, which was how to finance this, to your point. which was how to finance this, to your point, around the JFMC. Um, and the information that was shared there on any kind of project, you know, what are the options that makes this? Cause there's, that will spawn more questions too from the community, so we want to be able to respond to those, so.
That gives some of the information, if you remember from the meeting, of what people are paying now on the, on the current bond and when it ends. So that's.
That's all in the FAQ, yep.
But is that, with that, and, uh, deal with what you're saying, it wouldn't necessarily have to be presented that night, but if it was available ahead of time and.
I just think that the first thing we need to do is make sure people know they're being heard and we're responding to all of the questions that they have and it's clear in part of the meeting and give people a chance to talk. But I think if we do a regular Q and A, we're getting it into a series of rhetorical questions, right? So I think people should prepare comments and we need to be very, you know, they, they, they should have their comments. They can submit stuff ahead of time that we would be able to respond to. But I think it's going to be hard to do just a Q and A, we will spend a lot of time.
My point of, of saying that, suggesting we do that was just because we've heard a lot about that, that's what they wanted. So if we allow some time for that, I think, I think it's important. I don't know what, when they have their meetings next week, what our, what our staff leaders will decide is best. It can really get, like you said, I mean, it can get really off-base, it can get really, uh, redundant and that doesn't serve any good purpose.
Yeah, I, I don't want to cut off any community members who come and want to be heard, so I don't want it to come off that way. The point, yeah, the point in everything I'm saying is how do we structure it so that everyone can be heard? We are sure to respond because some of these questions we know already, but that we also make it an efficient meeting, right? So, and I'm brainstorming, not prescribing.
Okay. I, I think it's important too, President Vickers and Dr. Valoria, that we have a summary of what we've received so far. To date, we had 70 written comments, we had 30 in-person at the first study session. We've all received at least 20 to 25 additional emails. We had 10 additional comments today. So we're well over 120 pieces of public input that we've received. And I think it's important to know that all that input is being considered. And in, in it, and we have the, uh, form up, you know, that's outside of the public comment forum, but we have a form. So summarizing that and quantifying it, I think is really important. We do it every day, we read emails, we respond to emails. We sit here through 10 comments, we, we had the 70 from before that we all read and received. And, and I want the public to know that all of that input is being heard and there is a lot of it. And it's, um, and, and we, we have been receiving it and we will continue to receive it up till some point. And I do think we need to set, set that point. So, thank you.
And I think it reflects that we have been listening because there were already the alternatives to the, the ones that we had to date that were suggested, that were available for people to view when they came to the high school district office session. And that reflects, and it reflects, although it didn't come across in comments tonight, it also reflects input that any of you had made, um, as we started this process because we were also asked to share our comments and questions as the, as the staff worked with it. So it wasn't just from social media, it was also from some of us regular folks. And I, I agree with your comments. I mean, how, how to make it a productive, efficient meeting is the top consideration. But along with that, to make sure people feel that they are heard and that they, when they come to that meeting, that they have a voice that night.
I move adjourn.
Second, okay. All in, student vote. All in favor? I oppose, Carrie's five oh, just.